This is a short time commission on Tuesday, March 8th, 20.2 at 2pm. At 1:30 on that day, we want to lose you short. And I get a little talk through Brian Bockman. Eric, Eric P. Yes. Eleanor Harmon.
Yes.
Richard Mills. Sir. And Pat Brunstedt. I need to join this is a problem. So can I have a motion to excuse Pat?
I'm moving to excuse Pat.
Second.
Do I have a motion to approve the meeting agenda?
I approve, I move that we approve the meeting agenda. But I, I think I want to make an amendment to the agenda though. And have a brief discussion about changing the meeting venue during the library tax season. I don't know if we need to discuss it or Sarah's just going to find like eight in time. You all will agree with that as my thing. We just, whatever Sarah finds at the library, we just do that table.
Yeah, I don't think we need to amend it too.
Okay. I, I, I move that we approve the meeting.
Oh, second?
Second.
Okay, who's your second? Eleanor, thank you. Hey, just tell us. All the papers?
I have them.
Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of February 42nd, 20.2?
I move that we approve the minutes, but there are two changes I would suggest. And the first one is paragraph four, the image is a problem of 15 in black rather than red. And on paragraph three, it says the motion, click for option XX or unanimous way. And that is a, uh, default and a brought down menu. And so that motion passed unanimously. And so I just move that we strike out the click for option and just click it on pass. And scratch out the XX and leave it to unanimous way.
Okay. Five second with the revised minutes. Any further discussion? All okay? Any public comments?
I don't have any. Marlene, do you have a public comment?
I'm sorry, I missed, I missed what you said. Are you ready for public comment?
Yeah, go ahead.
All I wanted to comment on is trying to listen to these meetings from this meeting room. There's a lot of echo and a lot of sort of muffled. And I'm not really able to hear what you're talking about. So I just wanted to let you know that and I will be leaving the meeting because I really can't hear well.
So, what's under comments? So, oh, business design standards, 40% of world conflict. You're not here to discuss design standards, only the two areas of conflict. And Richard discovered it before you to present. Design standards and also Thornton sent me a note too. So the first one says a paragraph A states, no dwelling structure shall occupy normally 40% of the stolen land area. Paragraph N states, no structure, combination structures shall exceed 40%. 40% area as specified in code 17.50.
Um, I did some math on that, which makes it clear to me that it should be any building. Because if you take the average size lot and it works, maybe more than a lot are really young. Say 9,500, an average house of 18 hundreds. While I often see three, two car garages, 12 houses, three sheds, 150. That comes up to 3150. Um, which 40% of the lot would be 38 hundreds. So even with all those amount of structures, you can still meet the 40% criteria. So to me, it's clear that it's only the center buildings on the lot.
Um, did anyone else have any question?
Yes, actually, there's more conflict than that. A describes dwelling structure. M describes any structure. The definition of structure in the code includes anything you build on the property anytime, including a fence, a driveway, garbage cans, or anything. And so are we including all of those things in there or not?
No, but I didn't add some of those in. Um, I think that even with a driveway and a patio, you can still be at the 40% criteria.
Why do we include included driveways as structure?
Well, I just brought it up.
I know, I just, I just, I asked you.
That's the definition included.
Where is that included?
Oh, let's see, there is, uh. 1704, 550. I have, I have the, uh. I have the code on my computer. So we're putting in structure. In other words, we're changing the covered area to strictly from dwelling zone to anything. Do we want to do that?
Well, I think we'll have a little talk about impervious areas. We're briefly off then to a discussion of what the total impervious areas are. And I know we're not subject to the West of Washington NPDAS rules, but 35% total impervious, impervious area is usually up over anything I would say.
Yeah, and that's, that's going to fall into the, um, the Washington State's form area.
Exactly.
Regulations.
Or is that right now?
Uh, yeah, we're, we're the, for the near future.
For the, for the near future, but in the not too far future, we may exceed the population standard where all of this becomes, well, it doesn't become moot, but you basically hit a threshold at 35% impervious. Which, and I, I know what you think I'm wondering about not, no, not because, so if we talk driveways, all of that will be covered by stormwater, roof, driveway, and everything else. And then you get into all sorts of requirements for onsite retention and all this little stuff. So. In my mind, from my background, is 40% is very generous to allow all the structures on the site. As long as we don't have.
One thing confusing in San Antonio, I don't care what it is.
I, I think, I'm traditional structure, buildings. 40% is, I know when you said it's a lot less than the average lot, but the day is coming where we're going to be restricted, not restricted, because we're going to become difficult to do anything over 35%.
Right now it says dwellings.
Right.
We are also saying structures, which is, that's almost, I don't care where. This is not happening.
Okay, so.
Do you want to confuse enough though in proposed time of work?
Okay, so D L, so the work purpose is dwelling structure. So that only needs buildings?
No big things you live in.
But does not include sheds and garages, fair enough.
I think it's end structure.
But you're saying structures includes driveways?
Structure in the code includes anything you go on the land.
But are you building a driveway or is it just?
That's what code says.
Okay, Richard?
I'm going to read the definition of structure while I have the code. It's 1704, 550. Structure means any built party record above or below ground, affixed to the ground or attached to something fixed to the ground. And then it says seat building and just an outside building, I think that means that also. But building means any structure that, even if it's a row house with, with common walls. If the common wall is a solid fire wall and you have three dwelling elements inside a, a building, it would actually be three buildings. Because those three buildings are separated by firewalls. So.
Richard, this is way outside what we're talking about because it.
We're not, because we're trying to define the structure, there's structure, structure. I kept forgetting that confusing discussion last year where we tried to determine if it's a part of one building or two or three.
Yeah, and that's what I, my thing is if, okay, it doesn't matter if it's a triplex or a single family dwelling. Is that building? Is that within the 40%? We may define walls as, because those maps, the size of a building.
And what I was doing there is just, uh, defining building, the code does define building. And I was saying what the code, how to define building. But I'd like to make one more point to get my heard correctly, but Eleanor, it's what she said. She said, correct me, that the average lot is 9,013?
Yeah.
720.
I think that some of them are 1300 square feet, but the bigger ones tend to have a bigger house. So I still think even with a larger lot, you're still going to be way under 40%. With the maximum allowed buildings, including three sheds, you're still under that benchmark of 40%. And the thing is, we have got to keep open space for drainage as well as many other things. And I really believe that it's structures.
I, I, I did for lots, my lot, which is 10,800 square feet, which is a big lot. I had like 7200 and I played the math game. And my 7200 square, that means you have 2880 feet coverage. I consider housing, garage, sheds, whatever. And I said, okay, the house size is 1500, catch garage is 500. That's only 28%. They have detached garage to 440, which is reasonable size, why they have sheds at 200. So the total is 2600 square feet, only 37%. I, I have no issue with total buildings. I have an issue when we try and find driveways as part of the coverage here. That's, that's a different setup.
It is a different setup because it's talking about structures.
So how do we, how do we make the word, just, okay, let me ask this. Anybody have a, a problem with combined physical buildings as in the 40%?
So. If I had, if I heard your question, an extended question currently. Uh, I think the existing code clearly says the dwelling, dwelling structure. But the other point is the 40% shouldn't include all of the built up structures, all of the roof over structures, all of the sheds. And, and like Dan and Eleanor both pointed out, if you map, 40% coverage leaves lots of room for future house life. And as Jerry pointed out, that it is in the probable and foreseeable future, there will be 35% of impervious coverage. And so, so I'm, I'm okay with, with some of the plus class Eleanor's definition. Uh, that all of the impervious, not to include driveways, uh, be less than 40%, 40% of beds.
Well, driveway isn't a structure, I don't think we even.
Definition in the code says it is a structure.
Well, maybe we need to say structures attached to the land though.
I think we're making it too complicated. On their hand, if they have an obstruction for building, they put building. Does the definition of building mean the current, or does it come under the definition of building? That's the previous way the word structure arose. No, buildings, buildings, buildings shall be.
Can you just say go in structure?
Well, but unless we change the definition, a, a thing is important to realize that this is a legal document. And so we have to go with the definition that, that is defined in the code. And the definition of a building in the code is building means a structure having a roof intended for the shelter, housing, or enclosure of any person, animal, or child. The deed portion thereof is completely separated from every other portion by a major division or firewall having a window, door, or other opening therein, which, which will extend from the ground to the upper surface of the roof at every point. That each set portion shall be deemed a separate building. Um, and so, so.
So what's wrong with structure?
Structure includes a driveway. The definition of structure includes a driveway. And so.
It didn't say excluding driveways.
And that's what I just was suggesting, if I were to make a suggestion and I don't, I don't have that code that Dan's reading in front of me. So it's harder for me to keep you all in mind. But if we rewrote that to say, impervious, uh, uh, impervious structures excluding driveways.
Well, then you have the cat goes. You've got the cat goes.
Yep, yep. Exactly, including, including that, excluding paddles and driveways.
Sometimes it seems to be close.
What about one?
It seems to be close.
It's come, right, right? So do you have a code that would be very exciting?
It says, well, this is 17.50, uh, 210.
17.50, 210, there was a lot of ground.
That's our table that's part of that discussion.
Then 17.52, 10D.
17.52, 10D is, is, uh.
All that is.
So A is the, is the one we're discussing.
And so, shall I find 40%? So as part of the rest of the discussion through the day, dwelling structure is not defined in 17.04. Right, but I can order the, uh, trying to write that in the building structure. And if I wrote, see if that, if we included the definition for the building structure, if that would fix the issue. Give me just a second. So, uh, the way that I define building structure and I'm suggesting is, and it's up to, meets consensus. Where they like to find building structure means a structure designed exclusively or family occupancy. A building structure may have from one to several building units enclosed within its walls. Now, that definition then would exclude garden sheds and yada, yada, yada. So maybe this is not the best definition of building structure.
Um, why couldn't we just say any structure attached to the ground with a roof or something like that? So that would cover sheds, extra garages.
And that, I, I think that, at first blush, I think that that makes perjury of definition. Any structure, any roofed structure, uh, is included in the 40%.
But that's already a definition of building. Oh, so that is weird, or it says it has to be intended for the shelter, housing, or enclosure of a person, animal, or child. I don't know why that's in there.
If you include that, including child, a lot of work.
Mom was.
Cover garage, sheds, etc., about being personal line install.
It's basically essentially the same shed.
The thing that I think we have to be really careful of is if we make a change, I think Thornton pointed that out in his email. Anything that will change could have far more to do with discussion. And so it has to be analyzed carefully, how, what other parts of the F O S M C would be impacted by any change that we made in the definition today.
Let me give you an example, the code has seven references to buildings. Seven to references to structures and 38 references to dwellings. I just want to look for every damn one, see how they apply the rest of the code. Go through it. I'll be dead by then. But whenever you change definitions, you've got to look how it affects every other reference to it.
Sure, I can, I can just barely hear your destination.
Whenever you change a definition, you've got to look at every other reference that includes it right. But if you just change the wording in the, in the proposed ordinance here to one or the other, it doesn't affect anything else. It just affects that particular sentence.
And so what are you suggesting? How are you suggesting that the word make A and M consistent as one another?
Consistent of.
Make A and M consistent with one amendment set, or give it one, I don't care.
Well, well, that's what we're trying to do, but now we're stuck on dwelling structure.
You said that every, every building on the lot is a good 40% of that, right?
Not here. That's what we want to do, but how's the best way to say that?
They said, they said the word structure, they said the word building. So maybe if it's said the, the aggregate of all buildings does not exceed 40%. That's what it said, they said the word structure. And, and I'm suggesting that, that building makes building, changing structure to building and say all added buildings, uh, be around 40%.
This is, can you consider a shed?
Yeah.
We're sorry. Okay, why don't we just do that? Yeah. No buildings for combination of buildings shall exceed 40% lot. 40% is a lot that has specified in code 17.50. When we change the first one, paragraph A, no building shall occupy more than 40%. I'm thinking, you know, you know, do we even need any, not really. So we get rid of it, uh, we just move everything up.
However, if you took the living out of it, because the living quarter is, is what confuses the issue. That's what makes people think sheds and garages are not included.
Sorry, garage.
Is, is the definition of channel?
It's a living.
Same thing you want.
Okay, so, so that takes, takes it away from dwelling, because a dwelling is designed for a personal habitation. A channel would be like a garage or a shed. So if you use the definition or if you use building instead of structure, now you have all of those things that would be built with a roof, um, but not driveways and patways and stuff. So I think, I think that sounds easily enforceable.
And I think the fact that a spaced channel in the portion that Richard read indicates clearly that include shed where you start with.
Or a garage, correct.
So then, and I'm, I'm playing devil's advocate a little bit. Uh, if I had, if I had my house and three garden sheds and I wanted to put up a greenhouse, is the greenhouse, I've already, I've already met my, my, my three structures, my three, I'm not sure if I'm making this make sense.
I know what you're saying, and I, I think it should simply be three structures, whether it's two sheds and a greenhouse or three sheds, I mean, how much do you need?
Well, what, what does the code allow for, I guess, is the more important question, let me get it answered. I didn't look at the specific number of buildings that would be allowed.
I would like to tell you what's, and I think it excludes greenhouses from the three sheds.
It does, I don't remember exactly where they did.
Yeah, I've seen it, but I, you know, I think maybe this is a good time to analyze that. I mean, if you figure this one house here and he, and I'm not complaining because it's very well known, but he has a house with a two car garage, then he built another two car garage, then he built another two car garage. And if you have three sheds, does he need a greenhouse too? Or could he get by with two sheds and a greenhouse? I mean, there's a limit.
But it, it's not our job to, to regulate what the individual thinks it means, or should be.
However, the whole point of this, in my view, is we need to have open ground for drainage. And if you go and put three sheds, two extra garages, and greenhouses, you're eliminating a lot of life.
Well, the question is, I guess, should, should, should greenhouses be exempt from the 40%?
I, I have thought of a slightly different perspective to make this call.
Okay.
Instead of worrying about this a lot, instead we said that, that 60% of the total lot coverage must be, uh, impervious ground, must be, it must be open ground. Uh, so we just looked at some rivers like that.
We're getting, we're getting confused regulations under, under so our discharge. But the intent here is, I think, we're looking at buildings. And so if we're going to regulate 40% building later on down, we're going to have to address total impervious area. But that's not what we're talking about today. Right? And what we're in, what's, what, what the N P D asks, what the stone wall protection says, you can have it more, you just have to treat it on site. Where you are, you mess with this stuff. So there's a way to do, it's not permitted to have more than that. You're basically taking care of the impervious ground in a, in a good way. So I, I just look at, I love the buildings. So I just look up the definition of channel, it comes everything. Probably comes a greenhouse if you read it that way. You could read the definition of channel and say, the plants, do you want the plants? Yeah. So I, I think buildings are.
So it's tragic, how do we want to define it? Do we want to say any building attached to the ground with a roof?
All buildings, buildings period.
Buildings period.
Okay.
Buildings period, well.
I'm good with that.
Okay, so could we put in paragraph A, I don't know, I don't know if you're bored with paragraph A, I haven't read it. Or, I suggested it.
I, I have the, I have the orders written for you. There's four paragraphs, we have seen indeed.
No, go on with M, there's an M as well.
Oh, you're.
Maybe that part, put.
We'll have to take that.
Oh, M, M is in, is in our, uh, in the changes that we, the planning commission submitted, but that has not been approved, I said in council here.
Yeah, well, that's what we're talking about, because this is more of a discussion of cats. Because we've got ocean in here, we're trying to group.
Right.
So we, I think we revert M to A, all of it. M. I, I, I like, I want to make A and move down to A.
Basically. Would you read, yeah?
Well, it says unpermitted stru, fully structured under 26 are limited are limited to three per house of three houses and open sided structures intended only for private recreation vehicles, which has instruction intended to stream until they can access or garbage cans. Do not count towards this restructure limit. Structures or primary structure shall, as you say, not exceed 40% of the lot as specified in section. Just because I have two different purposes, keeping the cut, it doesn't hurt.
Can I ask a question? Maybe I know this somehow, but I, I'm missing something. We talked about three sheds, is there any limit to how many structures that are second from the house?
accessory structures? That's, that's a question that I had in my mind as well. I, I don't remember ever reading that there was a limit on the full number of structures.
Okay, it's a shed.
Okay.
So that's why I'm wondering about all these separate garages. And I don't recall having read that anywhere. Yeah?
I don't.
Well, I remember some of our discussions over the writers, we didn't do it. Oh, here, like, like I have a two car garage. And then I have a separate building, and I've got a huge two car garage and a few other rooms to that. So my second building is 1200, I think it's. That's 1200 square feet, that's my outlet. So, so I kind of, that's why I'm, I'm up 33%. And I really don't have to put much more under. So I guess I. So I guess I, I think about, you know, I, I know that Hal should talk about it more. And he's done a nice job, but how do we limit? I, I guess as long as it's limited to 40%, or we could continue to put sheds out there. But at some point, he, he's gotta get over, because he's covered the whole, that's a lot, right?
Now, that lot is about 1,300 square feet, so we've got a lot more building space. And I'm still suddenly questioning, and you agree with me, that I don't remember seeing anything about a limit on exterior buildings.
The definition that you read on M that you're proposing to move to A, I believe that said something about unpermitted structures? Obviously, obviously the garages that you're talking about wouldn't be permitted, yeah. Isn't unpermitted, it's by, it has a definition in the accessory chapter, under certain square footage. So I think, I think we just go with 40% of the building and leave it in both places. Just because it's a classified, like, in M is what I'm saying, because it falls at the end of the discussion of all these other things. Okay, so just use the word buildings instead of dwelling, dwelling structure.
And we can, we can make this motion to fix this problem, but I do think a future reference, we ought to look into probably when I just discuss.
Total number of structures allowed on these problems.
Right.
Total of buildings, buildings, those, that one is correct, yeah, yes.
Is it, is there a limit on sheds? I, I don't recall seeing anything else, but I think this was the definition. And we've got it, I think we probably need to.
Well, yeah, we could have stayed on three, three, uh, I mean, three, uh, under 200 feet are limited to three per house. But then we say greenhouse or open-sided structures tend to come to recognition, they'll include which has or structure to the screen with utility connections or garage, or this case, do not count towards this.
So I, I'm hearing, I'm hearing two different things, I'm totally confused. M suggesting that we take paragraph M and, and make paragraph A.
Well, I, I, I did, but I think what we can do, because this, this tackles sheds, up here, it just tackles 40%. So if we just put no building, no building shall occupy more than, no building shall occupy more than 40%. And because M where it clarifies a little bit more, no building or. But, so basically, we were using exact same words, no building or a combination of buildings. Same words as both A and M. Because in M it's clarifying sheds, and what is, it's within 40% of the house.
But we're gonna take out the living area, right? Where it's, it's stated as living.
We, we don't need two, because ch- chapel or chapel, chapel is used in the definition, which, which includes garages and other types of, protection of personal ground, not grounds. Perhaps.
What, I think I changed on, that's off of my computer right now. What you're saying, you should say no building.
Or combination of buildings.
Do we?
Here, paragraph B there.
Oh.
That's on A.
Oh. I don't do, um, uh, we just want to step in here, no.
Where's the building structure?
Yeah, no building.
Or combination of buildings. That, that way you can read your paragraph M.
God damn.
Hope you have your pressure, but I have nothing.
Whatever, just like, stuff gets to your track there. And then it approaches us. And then the restructure. And this should all, this should all be in there. So what we're saying is then, is in 1750 to 20A, should ring, no building or a combination of buildings shall occupy more than 40% of total lot area.
And then you need to change, kind of reflect the same words. Wherever you start with. So just change structure to buildings.
And we'll be up most of those buildings. Uh, those I see. Buildings or a combination of. We're really getting the briefs, you're applying school.
It's serious.
So, all right, I think then, I, I'm certainly in agreement. There will be some changes, because we have addressed that problem, we need to make a motion.
Yep, can I have a motion?
So I, I, I move that we, uh, change, uh, we proposed 17 dot 50 dot 20, uh, paragraphs A and M, uh, to remove structure and replace structure with building.
I second. Any further discussions? All in favor?
Um, so then, I, I, I made those changes on my computer. And do I need to email this to you, so everybody else can have a copy of it, or?
I think they're fine, but yeah, you can email to us about that. L, were you, yes?
I'm sorry.
Were you, yes, on the vote?
Yes.
Okay, there's a couple of other things in the full script, we're gonna use clarity. If, if, um, particularly.
That, that's the only thing we had on, on that ticket or something.
One on, on M, we described a vent, vent sewer vent pipe should be covered. A lot of times, sewer vent pipes, if they're too close to the street, they should be pretty important. So what I would, walk some security vent pipe out of the near by there, I guess that's okay, because if you, much of the jeopardy is your, well, high district vent pipe, and required you to put it back closer to the hospital. Then maybe you do before we put it in.
Yeah, well, we, we've got a council of this, all we're trying to do is make it efficient, so we shifted over to that.
The other thing I was not, once it extends under K, primary pedestrian lane, what in the world is that?
Yep, Thor, we're not here to discuss the document.
So I, I was curious, what, yeah, I wasn't sure, is it, is like a front work?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. And the third one is regarding D, but regarding all three, I think that's gonna be particularly enforceable. I keep my eye on that.
Okay, we can move on then. Uh, so, so we're actually towards this code 1750, 210, this is how it's going. So my thought here is, I got two comments, uh, one from Thor and one from Richard. So, and then Marshall brought that to my attention today, so why don't we go in that order? Thor, why don't you explain what your thought is, or Marshall, bro?
Oh, I forgot.
I got it.
Yeah. Oh, that was where we were uncertain as to how to express, that we didn't want apartments to kind of the minimum square footage rule. And there was a lot of discussion about changing definitions of this and that and everything else. And I thought it might be just simpler, just to say that apartments are included. I need it. And, uh, uh, the other option we suggested was limit this per, little paragraph to take care of the whole, what the problem.
Thor, I, I, I just can't hear you again, I don't think, that's the way I can hear.
You know, if this was wrong, I think I would have a mess. What's my? Now, what, what's up here? What are the rest of it? Anyway, what I've, what I've seen was that, uh, we should just say the minimum square footage rule does not apply to multifamily units, apartments, hotels, right? Makes it real simple, you don't have to go through definitions of whatever else are, and everything else. Or the alternative in my mind is to strike the minimum square footage rule up there, because it complicates a whole lot of other things, which we can cover later in the day, but in any event, it's it.
I prefer A. I would prefer the first suggestion.
Should. And I, I'm still not, and I can't quite wrap my head around what, what you're saying, so give it to me one more time.
Well, we had discussions about the minimum square footage rule applying to units and apartments, hotels, duplexes, fourplexes, things like that, right? And there's considerable discussion around whether we should redefine those uses in some way, so as to make them understandable, and some of those discussions evolved around this, uh, this crack, our building should be built. But it would seem to me that if we make these definitional changes to a lot of different things, we accept definitions used elsewhere in code, so it's a trend of that. Let's just say what we, what we do want, what we don't want, in other words, either exclude multifamily units from the minimum square footage rule, or eliminate the square footage rule, give it to you. So.
I think you make an excellent point, because I, I'm good with square footage throughout the regular residential area. But I think that you have to make some ex- uh, exceptions for people in rental units that perhaps can't afford 1,000 square feet, but they can comfortably live in something smaller. So I, I'm okay with excluding.
What is the minimum everywhere?
Which difference?
It depends on the way you are approaching it, what's, the very difference is 650, nothing goes below that. Um, and then it goes on waterfront, there for thousands of hours.
So we're, we're talking about 210, paragraph D. And what, what I wanna do with Thor is rewrite that so that I can see it, so that I can get my head around it. And do you want 210D to say what?
It's, basically excluding multifamily.
Basically, excluding apartments. Multifamily.
Well, well, can I ask, what, because I will hear, what is, is historical genesis behind the minimum square footage? Why, why does it exist?
What do you notice?
I want, I'm, I'm sure, I'm, somebody's thinking, why would they be doing this?
I want to be, I know, I know, we're painting from the, seven, I hear too much of this.
I think it's people like things together. Um, and, and I think it's about the extent of the neighborhood. Um, and I think people have every right to apartments, which is why we have a zone for apartments. People have every right to tiny homes, and we have a zone, not a lasa. But I, I, I believe in this, people like areas together, and you can choose your apartment. But I do think we ought to make the exception for multifamily dwellers.
Yeah, it, it's, the question was, the original question was, is we consider a four plus, he got a four plus. So he had four, or say, try to, that's easier to tell. Four, 400 square foot, 340 square foot apartments, or whatever, they have common walls. And now, do we consider the whole building inclusive in this square footage? Or was it an individual unit? And we, we, we decided last week that individual unit probably, that, that philosophy didn't, and it wasn't good.
Would that, if we've called it individual units for a village of multifamily, would 650 be a reasonable size, or not?
No, no, that's the problem.
It's bigger than most apartments, huh?
Yeah, okay.
Well, why don't we, I think there's a couple options, we can just take out multifamily units as an exception.
There was no.
Or we can say 450 square feet for multifamily.
Or you say it's the square footage of the whole, but not just, not just individual units.
That doesn't take care of what on or down.
I, I think it does, I think it does, because the argument, two seconds. No. Because I, I may be going down, down, yeah. The argument became whether a 400 square, uh, uh, building with three units, 1,200 square feet, whether each unit was considered a dwelling. Or does a whole building become a dwelling, and there's where it's okay? Marshall?
Well, if, if you guys take Thor's suggestion and remove the minimum square footage of the table from, uh, multifamily structures, then the building code will dictate the smallest sized dwelling unit that you can put in a structure. And that's down in the 300 plus or minus square foot range. Um, so there will still be a limit, you're not gonna have, uh, dwelling units within these structures that are smaller than, you know, and, and I can't remember what, uh.
Was it 320?
320, that's, yeah, sound right. And anyway, that way the building code would dictate.
So I would take.
Yes.
And that's what the city's done for 40 years. It was only recently they invented this notion that maybe you should apply it to units or something like that.
And I like that solution.
Would that be an easy solution?
I, I believe that it would be, uh, easily enforceable.
Okay.
Where, where it could get dicey is when you have a three-unit townhouse that they're going to subdivide, uh, within the subdivision provisions of the code, then you could end up with a, what's defined as an individual building on a lot that would be smaller than what would be allowed if you were a single structure being built on a lot.
And that's, personally, I think that's okay, but that's sort of the intent, what we're trying to do is keep, you know, keep tiny buildings on the main lot.
Well, those kinds of vaccinations were done primarily because of this goofy rule first. And Thomas developer wanted to do, he said, how am I gonna get around this thing, so?
Oh, oh, uh, and the teacher actually sharing?
Well, it's kind of goofy work.
Well, we, we, we talked, we talked about the, not, the, okay, the guy builds a building, he's got three units in there, he rents, maybe science is gonna stop. What's the difference whether he rents those small units and, and pay this, or it hits the lot as a individual units?
So if we take, if we take, make an exception for multifamily, the building code would take care of a lot more lesser sized, we should be good.
I think we should consider it an exception, I think it's a common practice almost everywhere in my life. Because nobody.
Why are we just excluding?
That's what I said, no, no other city I can find has a minimum square footage at all. And for us to have one, where, if other company, if other cities do, and we go through an awful lot of work here, re-ingending, okay, we should build that, and say, what did you do? But nobody has that.
Well, the other flip side of that is the minimum square footage is 650 square feet.
But the building code allows a different square footage, no?
Yeah, but so the building code, so the guy builds a duplex, he can build, he can build 640, 10 square feet. Of course, you know, I don't know what, what zone is a multifamily, or?
Depends on where it is, could be either 650, 800, 100.
Okay, so let's say it's, it, it, maybe it really does matter, multifamily. What, what's a du- do you know a duplex zone by number?
Division, uh, H, uh, 11, and, uh,
Eight is 650 square feet, and 11 is 800.
Parts of it, I mean, there's a difference between, well, from the one left, things like that.
But I don't think we need to deal with the whole thing tomorrow, there's only one area that's awful, and I'd say you.
Well, we need to fix this, and we're having a large and comprehensive discussion about the whole idea of anything.
I don't wanna deal with the whole thing, I wanna deal with where the problem.
When you look at it as square footage as in our town, that's the source of so many zoning, planning department confusion and problems, because you've got a number of, it's 650s along, so. a number of groups with six fifties along side of their square feet and next door neighbors. What's the point? I don't know, but that's just what it is.
Well, I think it works well in thousands of neighborhoods, but I agree.
I've never found another time in the past.
Oh, I looked it up, and it was not uncommon.
They know.
But, you know, the problem is, we were not really having to deal with that part of the pictures. If we could take care of the problem by dealing with excluding multifamily units.
Well, you do, you take care of that, that's a good issue, but maybe it's up somewhere else, you know, with other kinds of things.
But I mean, this minimum square footage is something for the city council, they really, if they want to throw up, they can do it.
See, we don't understand the rules, and I can hear it too, and most people really don't understand it. We're the experts, you know?
Well, we're trying to cover that. My biggest problem was that the code has been applied two different ways, and it's been circled in, in some cases by any creative or pretty, footings connected underground to put two structures.
Crazy stuff.
You know, I mean, things that just don't pass the common sense test, and you know it's a spirit. So I was hoping that we could, and I think Thorn's suggestion to just exclude multifamily dwellings from that minimum square footage table probably solves the lion's share of my problem when it comes to approval or denial of an application.
I feel that we should do my head around it. What I do know is, is the suggestion that I offered today, I emailed everybody, and as I started chasing that band, then I had to start making changes in each one of the residential building zones to keep the definition coherent, and that's requiring a whole of code change. If Thorn's suggestion, if I keep my head around it, eliminates making multiple changes throughout the code. So let me see if I understand correctly. If this were the footprint of a building structure, and I like the definition of building structure, it doesn't matter whether it's a building structure or not, but this was the footprint of the building structure. And if I put three dwellings inside that building structure, and as long as this, this structure, these four hundred and fifty by four walls, was six hundred and fifty feet in divisions one through nine, then I'm good. But each dwelling unit could be smaller than, and that's what Marshall was running into initially over. And if I write them, I think what Dana said, is what do we, the president commissioner, the city councilors, what do we care how large your individual dwelling unit is inside this overall footprint? The density regulations in each residential code tell you how many dwelling units you can put up per acre, regardless of what division you're in. And so, so if I'm trying to get my head around the record, I think Thorn's trying to suggest, that I think Thorn's suggestion may be better than my suggestion, because I think it's simpler.
I like Thorn's suggestion, I think it's easy, because the building code says a unit can't be any less than three. Maybe five hundred square foot, that's close, three hundred and twenty square feet, so guy puts in three, and they just got nine hundred and sixty square feet? I don't see anything wrong with that.
I'm good with it.
Marshall?
So, and I'm going back to Richard's discussion about the total number of units allowed in the density regulations. If we, if we totally exclude the multifamily structures from this table, then those density regulations, in combination with the building, the building code, will dictate either the number or how big each of those units can be. You can go down to a certain size and start adding numbers until you get to that density regulation. Once you hit the maximum number of units per lot, or whatever the, you know, per square footage, then that would be a limiting factor. You could have two different limiting factors in the total number of units, depending on how small the units were being proposed. And I don't have a problem with that, you could work, you know, I typically work with math both ways anyway.
There's a third limiting factor, that's parking collection.
Exactly, and I think the density regulations play into that part, you know, in most cases.
Let me ask you this one, twelve point five, do you just have to have one apartment stock a unit?
One point five.
To, one point five in multifamily, and.
Two of them.
And when you're into, into the R1, the single family residential, then it goes by that rule.
Well, I'm just kind of curious, because that took those units behind the pro unit on five run, the theater only had one spot.
Those are one point five per, they have, they have a total of one point five.
Why is the five five coming from?
Out of the code, I mean, how do you, how do you assess that? You round up, if you end up with, you need five point five parking spaces are required, and they ask it.
Okay, so it's not leaving the unit.
Well, that's the way it's defined in the, in the code, but you're rounding up to the nearest symbol.
I was doing some reading of this several weeks ago, I don't know that I can go back and find it right now. But what I remember reading is, is that there is a supposition that some families will have two cars, or some families will have one car, sometimes you'll have a new car. And when you add these all together, it came out to one point five per dwelling unit.
Yeah, we're probably going to have people pop them on the street.
And in a motel, where you got transit levels, it's one car, or one parking space required per unit, so.
Okay, that's kind of off topic, but interesting, and I'm good with your ideas as well.
So, well, let me read what I think that you are saying, and I'm not sure that my typing skills and my thumb, my fat thumb on the track pad. But I think that you said, seventeen fifty two ten, this will replace paragraph D, okay? That seventeen fifty two ten D shall not apply as well as described under seventeen oh four one sixty or seventeen oh four one seventy, and to row houses and other common wall residential developments, where the underlying land is subdivided into a lot ownership of an individual lot and home. Did I, did I capture that?
No, that's.
And I said, that's a type of thinker. That's what I suggested.
Yeah, that's what we were saying. I don't know what, what's.
I mean, what do you think about that?
That would be, that would be my question, is what would it describe in seventeen oh four one sixty and seventeen oh four one seventy?
You just must. Those are the definitions of.
I'll read it here in just a second. Seventeen oh four one sixty, and one sixty is dwelling multiple. Multiple dwelling means a building designed exclusively or by, conceived by three or more families, created separately from each other, containing fewer or more dwelling units. And one seventy is dwelling two families. Now, two dwelling dwelling means a building designed exclusively or by three families, created separately from each other, containing two dwelling units.
That covered all of the multifamily definitions.
It does, so back up to your pro changes there, Richard, and make sure that it still applies to the R1 or single family residential structures like what Philo is wanting to come up and make sure that they're. So we say what it shall modify to, but what does it attach to? Okay, so you're going to use your, your red sentence as a supplement to paragraph D.
Replace what's in blue, what's in red.
Well, I think you need to add what's in red to what's in blue.
Okay, let's read it, let me go.
That way you cover the R1, and you apply the table to R1 or single family structures, and you exclude multifamily.
So, if it makes sense to everybody, I will read what the two of them say. I better take this mask off slowly. So, paragraph D would then read, no dwelling shall be permitted on any lot where the main floor area of main structure, exclusive of open entrances and entrances, shall be less than the minimum floor space shown in the following schedule. Seventeen fifty two ten D shall not apply to dwellings described under seventeen oh four, one seventy and one sixty, and to row houses and other common wall residential developments, where the underlying land is subdivided to a lot of more. So I have to per parsing that, does that, does that mean that I can do what we talked about? I can have three dwelling units inside this one dwelling structure? And they would, any one of them could be smaller than six hundred and fifty square feet?
As I read what you just read, yes.
But then it's taken care of by the building.
So then we'd be taking paragraph D.
The row housing discussion was lifted directly from the multifamily, so many land that told me the code.
Correct.
And then also, again, I'm just trying to, trying to get it in my mind. One of the things that the developer would have to pay attention to is the density allowed by the comprehensive plan. And the comprehensive plan allows one dwelling unit in R1 for seven thousand two hundred, seven thousand one hundred square feet. And then it allows, very dependent on whether it's a duplex, a triplex, a fourplex, a fiveplex, that all of those, everything from duplex to sixplex, all of those are, are currently fall under the category of median density, which is twenty-four dwellings per acre. And then high density is sixty-two dwellings per acre, and low high density is not defined, although it's zone. Does that make sense that, that it might attract that?
Well, it has, I was, units per lot, but.
It's how many per acre.
It's still a lot. And then, but we're only talking about how many, how big each unit should be.
So I think that other members here have their head around this more quickly than I do. And if it makes sense to y'all, then I'm going to say that it makes sense to me, I can see the, see the lighting, and I mean that it's okay. But if all, if it makes sense to all of this, and somebody makes a motion.
Okay.
If we could buy these two into one.
Yeah, I'm still reading and trying to absorb the language that you're using about that also would exclude row houses and other common wall residential developments where the underlying land is subdivided to allow individual ownership.
I'll go with the next one.
Well, I'm, I'm just running through that in my mind to see if I can see a problem. I'm laying down this out in my head with myself right now, so, but I'm really not coming up with anything that.
What about duplexes, could it be a problem with duplexes?
I, I don't believe so. So long as this language would apply to, so you can, you can predict two primary use structures on a single lot, in the, and I believe it's triplex and marshall, or the duplex. Well, it would be fourplex and marshall, to be able to cite two duplexes on a single lot, and then subdivide those under the common wall, and the duplexes would be defined and built as what's called a twin home. And that's what I'm trying to kind of go through in my head, is if we have that same lot, and we kind of discussed that in the last meeting with my examples, is to have these two duplexes on a single lot.
You mean, and.
Then, so, so if you have a single lot and two duplexes, and then they subdivide down under the common wall, this is the only area that I can have any question. But they're both common wall structures, and they're allowed to be subdivided for individual ownership, sorry. So we could create four lots out of this single lot using the common wall, and then the other lot line would go right on here. That would provide yard access to the back for each of these units on either side. I don't see that there's not a benefit in that, or that there's a downside to it, as opposed to this thing being a fourplex and subdividing it. This, I actually think would be a more attractive, marketable arrangement than having a fourplex or a triplex subdivided. Because each owner of an individual lot, if you subdivide it, would have outside access to their backyard, be able to wheel barbecue around, and lawn mower, or fancy things over there. So this is something else that I'm considering in this discussion. Does anybody else see a problem with this type of arrangement, or is there a composition to that?
Well. Only if it's correct language in the Miss Land's provisions of the code, because it says, limits of building issues, there were really, and other than that, no.
Okay.
So I offer this to help everybody visualize and understand. And most of what I printed on, most of what I wrote on this no longer apply to what I did include in here, because I took right out of the hell of the news, or the page to find it. It's telling you, what lot size, D. And for a duplex, the minimum lot size is eight thousand square feet, which is each, each. That each several side and duplex would have that four thousand square feet, but I think the test would be.
Because of the. Would you use common wall subdivisions instead of having a single lot set in two hundred square feet? They drop it down, clear down, I think the smallest one I saw was either twelve hundred or fifteen hundred square feet per unit.
I'm just talking about the lot size as well.
Yeah, and the total number of units that would be allowed in this thing is divided into the total number of lot sizes. And we're talking about common wall subdivisions, you could make a smaller than seventy two hundred square foot lot to accommodate that one unit. But it has to be pursuant to the granting, I mean, conditional use program. And it has to be for common wall subdivision, you couldn't build four individual units there and subdivide those lots.
Are you talking about subdividing lots as a shortcut?
It is through the shortcut process here.
How do we get around the minimum lot size rule?
It's, it's, it's defining code, when you do a common wall subdivision, the smaller lot size is defined, the number of units per, per lot is.
This is not exactly common wall, we just separate it, right?
Well, each of these buildings, if they're built as a twin home, would be considered a common wall structure.
But not between the two.
But not between the two, and that's, and that's where I have.
I mean, I'm not very, I'm not very good at that concept, I just think of a particular quote, because it was on a case, or like, row house, as we're asking, which I haven't seen in this century.
Well, they, they, they do mention the word row house in there, but it's also referred to as common wall structures.
If we were to permit individual standalone, if they were called cyclones or whatever, like, that has a difference.
Yeah.
Then, I don't know.
The term row house is still used in insurance.
It's.
Common, or protective design, it's.
Yeah.
So I don't want to change it.
I, I don't feel like there's, the potential for community-wide opposition to this type of common wall subdivision, I think is probably minimal. But if you start trying to rewrite, or you get four individual small structures on there, I believe you're going to get more pushback. I believe you're gonna get more pushback than, than if you were to allow just like.
On the other hand, if you built four individuals, but you didn't have a subdivision there, what would you have? It's not legal right now.
Yeah, um. Well, in order to do that, then you have to meet the minimum six hundred and fifty square foot of the table. And, and uh, I think you're running a density or
Max.
total structure uh coverage, you might get into the one forty percent coverage or something like that.
Okay, I, I, I think we've kind of covered it. Um are we agreeing with the way Richard wrote it?
Yes. I believe he's covered, yeah. And if there's no opposition to this type, because I'm gonna have these come through the planning department. Uh matter of fact, I have seven conditional use hearings that are gonna be scheduled and I believe two or three of them are for this type of development. And if there's, if there's opposition to this configuration, uh subdivision of duplexes or twin homes under the common wall provisions, um then that needs to be dealt with. If, if this is fine under the common wall and, and there's no opposition within the group, then I will support those in front of hearing.
What if it were just two single dwelling units in that lot?
Then, then they would need to meet this, then I would require that they meet the six hundred and fifty uh square foot. Those are not, here's the other thing about that far, is those wouldn't be common wall, so the subdivision would not be allowed because there is no individual structure provisions for common, for subdivision. Then you have to meet the forty-two hundred square feet minimum on the lot. If it's a co, if it's a, if it's a common wall subdivision, then you can get less than forty-two hundred square feet per lot. If you're, if you're not doing the common wall subdivision, then you have to have a minimum of forty-two hundred square feet. Unless it's in an area that's zoned for more than one primary permitted structure. And you can put two structures over, but they would have to meet the minimum of six fifty of the tables.
Just kind of.
Well, it's getting similar as we, as, as this, this discussion goes and it gets more easily enforceable provided that this configuration.
Okay. How, how, how many square foot, square feet is that one lot with two duplexes on it? Was the minimum square feet based on the information that's outlined down?
On the ground or building?
The, the land, this, this, um.
Yeah, um. I don't, well, it depends on what zone this comes in. Um if you, so it would have to be at least a fourplex. Um two, three, and a four-family dwelling shall have a minimum lot size of two thousand one hundred square feet per dwelling unit per structure.
So it's an eight thousand.
So, and, and, and if we look at duplex.
Is this right out of the code?
Right out of the code. Right out of the.
I just don't remember saying per dwelling per structure.
It does. Okay. I'll show it right off.
That's okay.
That's a multifamily.
Okay.
And just uh, one of the black, one of the red.
Okay.
Uh lot size of eight thousand square feet. So, and we go back to fourplex. Fourplex uh two thousand one hundred. So, so this lot would have to be four thousand two hundred square feet to have a fourplex on it. And it won't have to be eight thousand square feet.
It'll be eight hundred.
Right, it'd be eight, that, that whole lot size to have two uh common wall duplexes on it would have to be eight thousand two hundred square feet.
Five thousand.
Uh if it was just a single duplex, so just, just happened to that, would have to be eight thousand square feet. Um.
And, and that, when, when I get a proposal in, that's, that's the math that I do. Um the total number of structure or total number of dwelling units uh in, in the zone that they're allowed for. Just because these are twin homes, uh doesn't mean that they would be allowed or uh they would not be allowed in a duplex zone there.
So.
It would have to be a single duplex if it were in a duplex zone there.
So this would have to be a multi.
This would have to be uh a minimum uh of fourplex in order to put four units and use the common wall subdivision uh provisions of. Huh?
I have a issue.
Okay.
So, so I, I nearly went down the red one. Oh, let me see if I can organize this thought. So here's the, the uh comprehensive plan tells us how many uh dwelling units we can have per acre. And an acre is forty-three thousand six hundred and fifty square feet, if I remember right, defined up here someplace. Uh and so it was worth considering that if a developer wanted to take an acre, if a developer wanted to develop this and if, if the code forced him to extrapolate, if we filled up with dwelling units, you have to still stay within the number of dwelling units per acre prescribed in the comprehensive plan. Did that make sense at all?
But if we go to script and not like specifically that.
The, the overall minimum square footage of a lot changes if you're doing a common wall subdivision. And that's the other thing that I don't have a clear understanding. Um when we talk about the comprehensive plan versus the source of municipal code. So whatever, no matter what the comp plan says, until it gets codified, um what I'm enforcing is municipal code. So.
So basically twenty-four per acre.
The, the, no. Um based on what Gary and Marshall just said, I don't believe we're seeing twenty-four per acre in the code. I see them in the comp plan.
Right, that's part of the thing we may give it, so. Where, with the comp plan.
What do you mean now?
Or does it? Uh whatever, whatever is in uh
The density.
The, the density regulation or the density requirements for the, the individual zone itself, it is, it's a, it's a section. Well, it's density regulation. This one is for
This, this is a.
Uh for duplexes.
Okay.
See, now this one here doesn't, does this, we don't talk about in a duplex section of the code, we don't talk about common wall subdivision. Because it's not allowed. It's not until you get up into the higher densities that they allow. Yeah, five and above that we allow for that common wall subdivision uh to start taking place.
So I think we're good. Right, so I was looking at this and I am.
Yeah, I think, I, you know, I've got something that's more clearly enforceable and um you know, if we make that language change, then we're not parsing definitions between the building, building structure and dwelling, dwelling unit. Which is what Ryan and I did to, Orion had two different conclusions as an interpretation to this part of the code.
Any further discussion?
I'd like to hear the code. It means entirety. I mean, just, just like the figure of this press. Not the one that Marshall's discussing about.
There's. The logic is.
So I move that we, let me back up on this actually, and some background. What we're reading right now has not yet been approved by city, city council. This is our proposal, we want the city council to approve it. And, and so what we're proposing right now, well, I have a motion, it would change seventeen uh uh dot fifty dot two ten D to say, note dwellings shall be permitted on any lot where in the main floor area of, of main structure, exclusive of open quarters and dwellings, shall be less than a minimum floor space short in the following schedule. And further, seventeen dot fifty dot two ten D shall not apply to dwellings described under seventeen oh four one sixty or seventeen oh four one seventy and to row houses and other common wall residential developments where the underlying land is subdivided to allow ownership of individual lots. What I can share, if I help, is I can pass this computer around.
Each can do it yourself.
Okay.
I thought you were assuming.
So we just, we just combined the reset, torn in your email and add it to what paragraph D already said. So that was my motion.
I'll say.
Any further discussion? All the papers?
I, I. Well, we, Richard, you send it to me. I, I, I will, I will send that to you. Uh and then uh that, that based a question of when this gets presented to the council. Uh um I, I kind of have my, I guess. But I don't think I really know what I want to present this to the council. Uh it's like, it's barely a question I'm saying here. And there's some more. Uh who? Is, is anybody volunteering to present this to the council? It's like, this is important. The way you go, it's all.
You need to stop this, bro. I can't let you go.
We'll, we'll figure that out.
Yeah, this hasn't, maybe somebody, I, since I came late to the party, this proposal came from someone or first on purpose, but we, the planning commission that included Tanya Roberts at that time, and that's a fact. And everybody is never that except Fender. Uh uh and we were actually talking about design uh standards for residential, residential design standards. And so we came up with, with all these proposals uh that were basically A through M. Uh and so that, that one came up, they were presented to the city council at the last, you know, the, two city council meetings ago. Uh this, this whole, this, this whole uh seventeen fifty-two ten presented to the city council, two council meetings ago. And they have, they were, they had Kevin and Eric had some questions. And I presented this and so I asked them to write down their questions and emailed them because they proposed to have a joint study session that included city council and planning commission to iron out the details of seventeen fifty-two ten.
But the, the other side of it was, I got a letter from the mayor because Marshall was down in trouble with, with what on the schedule, the six hundred and fifty square feet, and that was programs to
Right.
control. That's what we dealt with first.
But second, that's, that's the issue we prepared.
Yeah, the first part was design standards, Nancy was back in Vegas. It was a long time.
Well, we just kind of tend to discourage the placement of uh, when you say wall. I mean, fine, maybe, it's just.
Well, not, not really, it's, it's, we, we know we can't do that. But you, but, but you want a, just a box.
Well, I agree, just, just, it's, it's just a jazz, it's fine with me.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's making it a little more pleasing. There is one, a pack of that gorgeous modular home on Deflect Drive, it's not far from the airport. When we kind of put on a two-car garage, now we just put on a back porch. If you didn't know, it was a live-in home.
Very nice. I, she even invited the angel of around nine hundred and stuff.
Also, I'd be pretty embarrassed to admit, but you can't do this. That's, it's fine with me.
Okay, is there anything else that we want to discuss?
Did we finish both?
Yeah, we got a lot of them. Uh do you want to, we got enough time, we can ask for a public comment?
Anne Reese, do you have a public comment?
No developer, one time, one topic are periods more.
Yeah, I'd like to see that on the agenda in the future.
No public comment? Well, let me talk about that. We went down kind of a radical, unless I get direction from the mayor, I don't want to discuss it. Because we got way out of town. And I just don't want to waste time for any of this, so. I sent it here, email, ask me, and I have nothing to work on. Uh we sent a email and said, we don't have a subject at this point, we think.
Sure. I had a question for Marshall. If you, uh regarding motels, they prefer to uh apartments, let's say. Have you had any concerns about that or any, any disputes about that?
It, it has, it, it has come a, something of a discussion here just in the last month or so. Um because we've got, I don't know, I think there are several motels around town that are, that are doing monthly rentals on them. That basically turn them into an apartment. And I'm not sure, you know, with my discussions on a newer structure that was built, who wants to change use, um they're gonna have to go through um the building department and do a change of use. And, and redefine what the building's gonna be used for. And in one case, I believe it's gonna be um uh a multiple use where they would like to do night rental in some of the structures and uh and long-term, you know, over thirty-one days in some of the other structures. And to my knowledge, it's not an issue, other than they need to identify or declare the change of use.
What's that done on, um, that used to be a motel on Pipe Run uh near that little shopping center?
The windmill? Near the cinema.
Yeah.
That's like a fond opinion. Um but I see that, yeah, they've got some lease, they've got some lease legs out there or something.
It actually sold. Uh it sold last year and uh my understanding is the intent is to turn those out.
Long-term or short-term?
I don't know. I don't know. In fact, I, it was all hearsay because I was talking to the previous uh management.
I think it was often.
Yeah, yeah, there, there was, there was.
All right, okay. So, so that is a discussion that, that has come up a couple of times um in the general discussion of changing the use of the structure.
Is there any zoning concerns regarding that particular issue?
There, there are in that with the uh, with a transit rail, you've got a single apartment space requirement per unit. And if they're gonna convert to long-term rail, then they have a one and a half apartment space per unit uh requirement. So they could fall short. Um
That's true.
They have to, they have to either go through a variance uh or something like that.
Those units I'm familiar with, um there's quite a few that are like two bedrooms and uh they're, they're not all like, you know, single like hotel or studio type.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm not sure because they haven't gone through the formal process where I've got an opportunity to review them. We're just getting to the point where you know, I'm not, I'm, I'm not looking for projects right now. Um I'm just trying to clean up things that have become an issue or things that hit my plate. But I feel like that particular issue is fast coming to something that's gonna have to be formally addressed.
Is that a square footage for unit issue like we were talking about today or not, not?
I, I don't believe it's gonna be a square footage. I think it's gonna be more of a parking and a, and a declared change of use. Um just for the use of the structure. Now, if you're going from long-term rental to short-term rental, then there's other requirements. That, that's a, that's a more restricted or restricted use. So the implications there are greater than, than would be, not only would you have to be zoned for the multiple, or the uh transit rail, you'd have to be in a district, you would also have to consider sprinkling.
Mostly the conversions are going to hold themselves in downtown.
Yeah, and I don't know that, that those conversions are happening um because of uh market demand or if it's uh simply they're not going up on weekends and they want to keep.
I would say it's market demand. There's a, a lot of young people out, have real hard time finding a place to rent here. In fact, a lot of people that work in the insurance are living out of that revenue.
Yeah, and, and that's part of us driving this concept of the common wall subdivisions where individual ownership, district owner loss alternative to a single-family residential building that's part of one tunnel. So.
In our time, those are all the hotels, back in the sixty, seventies, and only one building in downtown had a apartment.
Okay, we got way out of town.
Richard, I, I must ask a question. Uh I was thinking about this one, I forget what Marshall was saying, so Dan mentioned nothing to say. But what if somebody wanted to buy one of those apartments uh and own? But what if somebody wanted to buy one of those apartments, uh, and own it rather than renting, uh, um. What would prevent the owner from settling that dwelling unit?
Well, they're not set up for that, they're not, um. They would have to be either condominiumized or fall into the, uh, common wall subdivision, and typically your motel construction is not built. Under the standards of common wall subdivision, so you, like, you cannot have a upper floor, lower floor split in a, in a, in a big parcel. The only ways for those common wall subdivisions where you can have individual ownership would apply would be in the, uh. Where you have a ground floor, you have a front exit, and a rear exit.
So, so, I was going down a rabbit hole that doesn't need to exist, that, 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 that's just, under, under any existing or anticipated. So, I could not buy a dwelling in one of those existing, uh, uh, motels or re, reconfigure.
Not unless they condominiumize, like, the, uh, what did we, we were just talking about the, uh, weathering, or what's the, the one on point ground then next to the?
Wind dam.
Or wind dam. So, wind dam, in my understanding, wasn't condominiumized on point?
I thought it was.
Well, I still.
It, it was, I, I think it is sold.
Yeah, but I don't think they, they think it's condominium.
Oh, it's still, it's still legally a timeshare. Okay. Multiple ownership condominium legally, so that would be one of those instances where you could buy a, uh, in a, in a.
But the, the, the code, the code is already clear enough to enforce, it doesn't need modifications to enforce it, as a matter of fact. So, Dan, I'd like to have another step, so we can, I'd like to talk about the, the, um, the template or note taking, through these means to just clarify. If I can, just to set it. And so, I have.
Cause I'm gonna use it when I get home.
Perfect, I have a whole document that I created, uh, and I, I made it into a template, and every place that the name. Or the date shows up, it's a dropdown menu, providing you open the template and can use Word. If you open it in Google Docs or, or any other, uh, word look like, then those menus don't work. When I created the menu, I was able to draw the note takers attention to some specific areas. And so in my latest template, I changed those to red. And the intent is, is when you write the minutes, that you go up to, in, in the menu, and you change the red back to black. And one place, we talked about in today's, that we approved, then I said, there's a pass or fail, and then unanimous or, or X, X. Uh, and so, the intention is, is that whoever's writing the minute, they'll, they'll either delete the X, X, or delete the unanimous. Uh, and click on the pass or fail, uh, and, and, and it's, it was passed, four to six, or whatever, whatever the thing was. If you want that template, I emailed Dan.
I was, here, I was gonna use it, try it out, see if I, see if I can add flaws with it. Work with you to get it fixed, it's all right.
Perfect.
But then I'll send that.
Perfect, that, that, that makes, that makes braces to me, uh, um, so.
Please, I have a pick of those to trigger. I have a pick of those to trigger.
So, the last thing I'll say about the template is, is I tried to cover all of the comments that we discussed. But if a new, if a vote is not on a template, of course you've gotta write that in, you've gotta, you've gotta do your own, who, who passed and failed, and, you gotta. So, yeah, I think that's a great plan, you take the notes, use the templates, see how it works.
Okay, here's the order of note taking, uh, Eleanor, your next meeting, our next meeting. Then go Mr. Richard, to Gary, to Pat, Thor, and Brian. So, all of them, they go. All right, so, with that said, I just need Eleanor as a paper for that committee. And, uh, next meeting is March twenty second, twenty point two, two P M. Sarah will let us know when the actual day is and the time. Cause we don't have a spot right now, cause this place is big, has been wasted out.
So, what I, what I'm assuming is that, uh, if the libraries are available on a Thursday, on Wednesday. At one o'clock, we're all willing to meet on Thursday, one o'clock? Is that, is that?
Well, I can go out, I can, once Sarah tells me, I'll make sure we got a floor. If we got a floor, hopefully.
Perfect.